This is meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one P M, June teleconference meeting. On orders executive order of remote participation on Thursday, March twelfth by Governor Baker, and taking certain, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. I hereby call the meeting to order. You have the roll call. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea.
Present.
And Commissioner O'Brien is present. Uh, before we get to the agenda, I would like to just say thank you to the entire staff and the commissioners for all the birthday wishes and the cards that I received, and I appreciate it very, very much. Minutes of the open meeting on October seventh, two thousand twenty.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes of the open meeting on October seventh, two thousand twenty.
Second.
The motion made in second to approve the minutes of the open session, meeting of October seventh, two thousand twenty. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Is there any public comment? There being no public comment, we'll go to Capitol Improvement Report Superintendent of Bill with John McGowan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We're still dealing with the, uh, installing the plexiglass in the courtrooms. Uh, we're getting pretty close to winding down now. We only have like three left. We finished, uh, this week, and we finished, uh, uh, no, we didn't finish, I'm sorry, Brookline we finished, except for the breaking part of it that they use them. I think I told you we couldn't get in there. But, uh, I had Joe go over there this morning, and, uh, he measured it all up, and, uh, we're gonna start fabricating that today. Yesterday, he went down to rent them and measured all the, uh, the main courtroom down there, and there's one other courtroom. So, we got three that we're working on right now. And, uh, on Saturday, we finished District Court with the help of the state people that we had come in, help us come in, and, uh, and they did a great job. And, uh, that I talked to the judge over there, everybody's happy, and there's a few, like I told you before, there's a few things that, once they start using it, they're gonna find things that they wanna add. There's some pieces that we have to, uh, cut loose and fabricate holes in them so they can pass papers through. Uh, everyone seems to want a different, uh, thing done, which I have no problem with. I told, told them, but the main thing is that we have to finish these courtrooms first, and then we'll go, we'll return back and do whatever they wish for, you know, their courtrooms. They, they all seem to be in, in line with that. And other than that, I, I, I have, uh, no other, uh, things in the, uh, oh, we started the, uh, duck work project last night down in, uh, Quincy Court, planning, uh, of the duck work. Uh, that's gonna involve probably the rest of this week, uh, might involve out of next week. Uh, that's what I was led to believe by the, uh, the people in charge. But other than that, uh, I have nothing else going on.
Hi, thank you, uh, John. Any comments, Commissioner Collins?
Um, uh, no comments, but other, other than to say thank you, John, nice job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Shea?
No, I have no comment on that, but I did notice yesterday, uh, at the Quincy Court, John, that that window's finally fixed, it looks good.
Yes, we had that done the other day. I had them out here to, uh, in the rear entrance to the registry, there was a, a small pane broke, uh, uh, sometime on some delivery that was being delivered, they broke the window, but nobody ever reported it, so I don't know who did it, but we're gonna fix it, get it fixed. They come out and measured it, and, uh, it's gonna be taken care of shortly.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, for the report, John, and thank you for the good work.
Thank you.
We have no appointments, all business, we have nothing personnel matters, we have none. Uh, the payroll and expense warrants for approval. Chair will wait a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the following payroll and expense warrants dated October fourteenth, two thousand ten. County expense warrant in the amount of twenty thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Agricultural school expense warrant twenty-one dash oh-four A in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars and sixty-two cents. And a county weekly payroll twenty-one dash fifteen in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
There's a motion made in second to approve the, uh, weekly expense warrants as presented by Commissioner Shea, and second by Commissioner Collins. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Um, bid openings, we have a contract recommendation and awards, um...
Aye, Commissioner O'Brien.
For the Certified Accountant to perform auditing and accompanying financial analysis services for the county in Norfolk. Let's go year two twenty to two twenty-two. With an opportunity for two years, one year ex- extensions. Uh, Nancy, you wanna talk on that?
Ah, yes, Commissioner O'Brien. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, yes, we, a request for audit services was sent to four firms back in August. We received three quotes. The quotes were from Powers and Sullivan, Lynch, Mariney and Associates, and Melanson. We had formed a review committee, which consisted of Paul Connors, Chair of the Advisory Board, Michael Mullin, Bill Buckley, myself, um, Treasurer Timothy, Joe DiOria, the County Accountant, and Rick Fitzpatrick, School Business Manager. We met, and we reviewed all of the proposals, and after discussion, um, the committee recommends that a contract be awarded to Lynch, Mariney and Associates. In the amount of first year, thirty thousand five hundred dollars. For the second and third years, if renewed, thirty-one thousand five hundred for the second year, third year, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And if a single audit is necessary, the cost will be seven thousand dollars for the first year with no increase if needed for the second and additional year.
Any comments, Director Mullin?
And I have Rob, oh...
I'll get to you in a minute. Director Mullin, do you have any comment?
No, no, I just wanna echo everything, oh, you know, everything, uh, everything that Nancy had mentioned, uh, like, we had, like, uh, we had a really good group reviewing everything, and, um, oh, you know, and went through all, and went through all of the proposals. Oh, you know, and Lynch and Mariney, they, uh, have a lot of experience working with the county. Uh, they have done a very good job for the county in the past, uh, like, and, oh, you know, and they know our accounts, uh, you know, they know our finances, they know the county, uh, like, and I'm excited, and we're all excited to have them back, uh, like, and we do have Rob Lynch here with us, uh, like, on the Zoom with us, um, uh, you know, and I'm not sure, like, if Rob has anything to add as well.
All right, hold on a minute, Commissioner Collins, do you have any, uh, comments?
No, I don't have any comments. I, I wanna thank the, um, the team that put together the recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Shea, any comments?
Only that, uh, I echo what Peter said, uh, that, that was a, uh, a blue ribbon committee, and I'm, I'm, I did speak to several members about it, and I think, without reading anything into it, it's a good sign that, uh, uh, to Rob, that Lynch and Mariney wanna come back to the county, so I, I'm only taking that as a positive sign, I'm ready to go.
Okay, thank you, and as the Chairman of the Board, I can vouch that, uh, Lynch and Mariney Associates, uh, that they've done a great job in the past, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, um, the future. The Chair will wait, wait a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we award our independent Certified Accountant contract to perform auditing and accompanying financial analysis services to the county for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, with opportunity for two one-year extensions to Lynch and Mariney Associates.
Second.
There's a motion made in second to award the, uh, out of the contract to Lynch and Mariney Associates in the amount of thirty total, or thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, for, for three years. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you. Uh, the next thing we have on the agenda is the lease for, uh, three copy machines at the Norfolk County Aggie School.
Hi.
Nancy, wanna, uh, Rick Fitzpatrick, does he wanna talk on it, or, or you, Nancy?
I, I will talk, Commissioner O'Brien. Um, we have, our copy machines that we personally have are at the end of their lease, and we are in need of three more. The machines are leased rather than purchased because of the high volume and usage at the school. By the end of the three years, the machines are basically seen their end of their useful life, and the pricing came from the state contract. And there are three different machines we are replacing, and each machine includes unlimited service for the, for three years of the contract lease, and then it also includes a toner for each of the machines. Um, I would recommend to award to Toshiba for the three copiers for the agricultural high school for a period of three years.
All right. Commissioner Collins?
Um, I don't have any questions.
Right, Commissioner Shea?
Is Toshiba the only bidder?
They were the only ones that met all of our terms throughout the state contract, all of our needs.
And we've done business with them before?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the Chair will wait a motion for the awarding of the contract of the copy machines.
I'll make a motion that we recommend a lease of three copy machines for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School from Toshiba American Business Solutions per the state contract.
Second.
Motion made in second to, uh, award the contract as recommended by Commissioner Shea, and second by Commissioner Collins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Uh, we have an application for the E V charging station at the Norfolk County Aggie School for approval. Uh, you wanna comment on that, Nancy?
Yeah, if I could, if I could, um, if I could, Chairman, Rick Fitzpatrick, uh...
Okay, Rick, go ahead. Go ahead, Rick.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, if I could just comment on this, this is, uh, an application that it's, uh, the first step in a process in order for the school to entertain the idea of installing electric vehicle charging stations, uh, on the campus as part of the, as an adjunct to the canopy that's gonna be installed in the parking lot. This application simply gets the school or the county, the owner of the property, uh, into the funding path that, uh, EverSource has for these projects. Essentially what it is, is EverSource funds any infrastructure, uh, that needs to be done to connect the charging stations, vis a vis through trenching or conduits or whatever wiring and metering needs to be done. Uh, that would include, you know, uh, a transformer if that's, uh, something that's needed as well. The school would then have to, uh, go out and seek a vendor that would then provide the electric charging station, and once that, uh, equipment is purchased, EverSource would come out and do all the connections. So, this is just something that, um, we feel here at the school will again play along with, uh, the school, the students and the staff, encouraging people to, uh, not only drive an electric vehicle, which helps the environment, but, um, also, again, adds to the curriculum component that we're so deeply engaged in here, which has relates to the solar project.
I thank you, Rick. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Collins?
No questions.
Commissioner Shea?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. And Rick, is this something that we'll start forth with after this, after this vote, or...
Uh, I, I don't, I don't suggest it would start right away, Joe. I think it just gets us in the pipeline with EverSource with their funding. Uh, I understand that once that funding, they're still approving applications, but once the funding does dry up, you will then be placed on a waiting list, uh, and then you wouldn't be actually able to start the work until more funding became available from EverSource. So, this really just gets us in the loop.
Okay, so this is the opening round, so to speak, sellable?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Chair will wait a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we recommend the application for the E V charging station at the Norfolk County Agricultural School for approval.
Second.
The motion made in second to approve the application for the E V charging station at the Norfolk Aggie School. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you, and next on the agenda is the report of our Veterans Service Advocate, Dale, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as, uh, was suggested in the past and, and asked by, by Mike, I am supporting Canton. Uh, uh, I've been doing so for a month or so, and, uh, due to the situation there, they're in pretty tough shape. Uh, the prior V S O left abruptly, uh, the Chapter one fifteen benefits were not addressed for a couple months prior to that, so we've had people who have not received any benefits since June. Uh, I've been working with D V S to, to get that corrected and get these people back on track so that they have the subsistence funds they need to get by on, on a monthly basis. Uh, back in, I believe it was June, they had about twenty-six, twenty-seven people on Chapter one fifteen. When I first started looking at October, we would only pay about fourteen people, so that's another ten people plus that would not have received any benefits, and that's, that's pretty tough. Uh, so I'm spending about, uh, three to four days a week on Canton business. Uh, I was asked to provide feedback on the candidates for the V S O position. Uh, of the three candidates, I thought there were two that could do the job. Uh, one of them was selected, and he'll start on September twenty, or October twenty-sixth, and, uh, I'm, I expect I'll spend time with him through the end of December, uh, getting him up to speed, because in December, we have to start to recertify everyone, and that's a pretty intensive and very critical, uh, process to get done, done right. Uh, so, uh, keeping that going. Uh, and what I'm doing, uh, as far as how I interact with, with people, I'm following the most conservative guidance on COVID protocols that I have from each of the communities I serve, whether it be Franklin, Avon, Canton, or Norfolk County. Uh, so, uh, some of the towns have looser guidelines than others, uh, so I'm following those which are the most strictest, uh, so that someone can't be upset that I didn't do what they'd asked me to do as far as COVID, uh, protocols. Uh, I, so because of that, I'm continuing to work about eighty percent of the time remotely, uh, due to the limited separation of space available in, in the Franklin office. Uh, I have made some limited house calls, uh, due to clients' needs and situations and urgency of their action, uh, but again, masking, et cetera, is, uh, is followed and requested of the client. In fact, after, uh, this meeting, I'll be going to a client's house, I'll be dropping stuff in his mailbox for him, and then I'll call him when I have done so, so that he can go out and retrieve it, near documents that he needs for, uh, fuel processing. Uh, October third, we distributed more food, about thirty-five boxes. In fact, uh, when I go to this veteran's house, I'll be leaving a box of food for him as well. Uh, that's something we continue to do. Planning for Veterans Day, it'll be a virtual event, uh, we'll pre-tape it and then be able to play it on local T V on Veterans Day. Uh, M V S O A did have an in-person meeting. Uh, I was a little skeptical about going, but due to, uh, the subject matter, I did attend, we, uh, people were good, everyone was masked, everyone kept their distance. Uh, so that, uh, it was a little, you know, concerning, but we all behaved ourselves, which I was very pleased to see. Uh, we have, uh, I've attended a lot of V A, uh, training recently. Uh, most critical was on virtual, uh, uh, suicide prevention training, uh, suicide awareness. I may have mentioned it past, I don't know that I did. I lost a good friend to suicide back in June, uh, the day before Father's Day, so this has been a very, uh, key item for me. In fact, uh, with my West Point Alumni Association, I'm now on a subcommittee task force working on, uh, with the new V A program called Prevents, uh, to work on, uh, making suicide awareness a much, uh, broader, uh, skill set, uh, for veterans. Our annual D V S training is now in process, and that's on a monthly schedule instead of being four days, one, uh, in one week. We're now doing it each month. We spend about two hours going over different, uh, subjects. And, uh, as I have said in the past, V A claims, uh, continue to, to go, they are a little challenging, but great news this morning, one of those folks that I made a home visit to, to help them get their claim processed, and that was about, uh, was just after I started working Canton, so about four weeks ago, her claim's been approved. So, they did come through very quickly on that, and she's a surviving spouse, hundred percent disabled, uh, veteran, uh, so she'll, she's, I'm happy that that went through as quickly as it did. So, uh, just keeping, uh, things going and trying to help our vets as best we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, uh, comments, Commissioner Collins?
Dale, thank you for your, um, your hard work and your kind work, and I'm sorry for the loss of your friend, and, um, uh, good job, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shea?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, I, every time I hear a report, uh, from Dale, I, I realize how fortunate we ought to have someone with his background and, and dedication. I just have one quick question about Canton. Roughly, how many vets do we serve, or does Canton have under, under that roof, twenty-six or twenty-seven, or is that just for the Chapter one one-five program?
That is for Chapter one one-five, and that's what I've been focusing on because it's in such disarray. I do not have a handle on how many total vets they have. Uh, they've had some unique practices in Canton. Tony Adriati is a, he, he's, you know, an icon in our V S O, uh, organization. He was a V S O there for, for many, many, many years. I learned a lot from him when I first started with the county.
Uh-huh.
Uh, but because of his long tenure and his ability to get things done, he had a very aggressive and progressive, uh, veterans fund, and they did a lot of things with that fund, but he also kept it, uh, growing, so he always had income, uh, there that would offset his expenses. After his tenure stopped, uh, the V S O continued the expenses but failed to rejuvenate, uh, the income. So, we're in tough shape there because he made commitments to pay for things that, uh, I find challenging, that they're committed to, so, you know, I'm, I'm advising the town, if we made a commitment, then we've gotta do it. Uh, I will recommend they make some changes to how they manage that fund until they're able to grow it again to a substantial level. Uh, and I'm talking, they had, I know, about a year and a half ago, Tony had about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that fund, now it's under sixty-eight. In fact, it'll be down to about sixty-four, uh, after another issue is, uh, resolved. So, it's, uh, it's tough.
Okay, great work, thank you.
Well, Dale, I, as a veteran and a, uh, life member of, uh, Dedham Post A D and Maritime Legion, I wanna thank you for everything that you have done for all our veterans. And I especially wanna say that if every community in Norfolk County had a Veterans Service Officer at Dale, it'd be a wonderful thing for our veterans. You do a great job. I had an occasion to talk to John Conley, Selectman at Canton, and he had nothing but high praise for the, for you, for Norfolk County, and I wanna pass that on to you and to the Commissioners, so, uh, as a veteran, and I've been the Veterans Advocate in Dedham for over fifty years, and, uh, put all kinds of, uh, fallen arrow signs all over the streets in Dedham, and I know what it is to assist a veteran's family when they're in trouble, and, uh, they need a buck, and they were always there for us, and I'm very happy that you're there for them now, even with the great career that you had. So, thank you, Dale, on behalf of Norfolk County, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The report of the County Director.
Uh, yes, and I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to, I mean, oh, you know, oh, and I really wanna begin by piggybacking what, oh, like, on what everyone, um, had just mentioned, and also thank Dale. Um, a few, he's actually, it was about, about two months ago when, oh, you know, I saw that Canton needed help, uh, like, and I reached out to Dale, oh, you know, and Dale, in his efforts, as he always has done, um, oh, you know, he's helped, and he's not, he has not only helped, um, he has gone above and beyond, um, and, you know, really served Canton, uh, can serve their residents and their veterans, and, uh, like, it's what I think we all like to think of the county, oh, you know, probably doing when we're able to, to help these cities and towns, oh, you know, who we represent and serve, uh, like, and Dale, um, as I mentioned, he always really does, he does above and beyond, I mean, I, uh, like, and I wanna thank him. Um, uh, can you package, Mr. Chairman, you, um, have the registry revenue numbers, uh, like, for the month of September, um, and I'm very happy to say, oh, you know, that things at the registry, oh, you look to be very busy, um, and I want to thank all the folks at the registry, uh, uh, like, for their work and for their efforts. Uh, like, you will see, uh, you will see that our recording fee, uh, for the month of September, they were a hundred and thirty-one thousand over projection, and, uh, for the deed size, for the deed size fees, uh, like, oh, like, in the a hundred percent of the deed size fees, which we have based our budget on, they were a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I believe, over projection, so, uh, you know, three months into the fiscal year, uh, those are very, very good numbers. Um, uh, like, uh, like, and to that point, uh, like, as of right now, we have six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars over projection, uh, when you, uh, like, uh, actually add up and combine the registry fees, uh, like, with the deed size. Oh, you know, I don't, like, I don't wanna be an alchemist here at all, uh, like, I try to be very practical and real, um, um, however, one of the things I, oh, you know, I think we all worry about and wonder is what, oh, what the winter will hold, and what, uh, like, a second and third wave of the pandemic will hold as well, and, oh, you know, obviously, with the registry numbers, uh, oh, you will, they've been, oh, you know, I think they put us in a, oh, in a very good shape at this point, um, in the fiscal year. Uh, like, when we're talking about our revenues, um, another thing, uh, another thing that we typically deal with, uh, like, in September or October, uh, you know, at this point in the year, uh, we usually have heard, uh, from the Department of Revenue, uh, like, on the deeds withholding payment, uh, like, for the retirees' M O E, uh, like, and we haven't heard yet, but I reached out to the... Uh, like, and we haven't heard yet, but I reached out to DOR, um, actually mid last week. Um, and they mentioned, oh, can they, um, and they mentioned that the agreement is in process. Uh, like, and we should have that, we should have that very, we should have that very shortly, but, um, in terms of what that represents in our revenues, oh, you know, that is, that is one point eight million dollars of, out of thirty one, out of thirty one million dollars in revenue, so it is a good chunk. Uh, like, and I'm, I'm working, uh, like, and I'm working with DOR to make sure that, oh, you know, that agreement in a very timely fashion. Um, and I really don't, at this point, I don't see any issue with that. Uh, just, uh, just moving on, just moving on, um, as John McGowan had mentioned, um, oh, like, a lot of focus has been and has continued to be, um, on the duck, um, on the duck work, on the air quality um, of our buildings, oh, like, in the, oh, like, oh, like, in the, oh, like, in the airflow engineering of our buildings. Uh, we, I believe about two weeks ago now had TIG and Barnet, um, and they went through the registry building in Superior Court. Uh, the beginning of next week, they're going, uh, to Stoughton District Court, to Brookline, into Quincy District Court as well. Um, and from that, they're gonna come up with recommendations, uh, based on the ongoing pandemic, oh, like, and based on the focus on, oh, you know, on air quality and engineering and movement, uh, that we will be able to take and make, oh, you know, to help better protect the health, um, and the safety and the well build, and the well be, and the well being of our staff, uh, you know, of the trial court staff and of the general public, so, uh, one of the, one of the focuses that I see, uh, that we have mentioned before is a, is a focus, is a focus on, oh, like, on air purification systems. Um, um, and I actually, I spoke with the air quality engineer from TIG and Barnet earlier, uh, you know, and he confirmed that, uh, like, and they're actually wanting to report, oh, for Superior Court, uh, as we speak. Um, additionally, I'm sorry, I have a lot this week, Mr. Chairman, uh, but we've also been working with the, uh, like, with the Abrahams Group, uh, like, uh, uh, oh, like, on a contract for the operation, for the operational analysis. Uh, like, we've been actively working with Mark Abrahams in the Abrahams, in the Abrahams Group and, uh, like, we should be able to come before you in next week's meeting, uh, with a contract for approval. Uh, oh, you know, like, oh, like, oh, like, already I've, already I've, like, I've, like, I've had two teleconferences with Mark Abrams and he's, um, and, you know, he's great to work with, oh, you know, and I'm looking forward to working with him to carry out this uh, whole endeavor, um, and have him working with all of us, uh, like, in the coming months, so that's exciting. Um, and, um, and then finally, Mr. Chairman, uh, we are, uh, like, as part of the solar project, we're now at a point, uh, like, uh, uh, where we are setting up and scheduling a public hearing in Walpole, uh, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that will likely be in mid-November. Uh, so we're working on that. We have advertising requirements, uh, you know, that are prescribed by General Law, uh, which we're working on, uh, like, and, uh, like, and we're, and we're working out to meet that. We do know, uh, that there are a number of folks in residence, oh, in Walpole, oh, you know, who have, oh, like, who have emailed us, um, who have asked about opportunities where they can weigh in. Um, and the public hearing is gonna be an important opportunity to that end. Um, oh, 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 you know, like, and we're working with that, and we're working with everyone now to finalize a date. Uh, but, uh, oh, you know, but I do believe, uh, like, it will be in mid-November, uh, like, and we can keep moving forward with that. Um, and then lastly, Mr. Chairman, uh, we do, um, have an advisory board meeting scheduled for the 28th of this month. Um, you know, I have been, um, oh, like, and I've been working with Chairman Connors. Um, I have to, I have to, uh, with Joe Redd and the Pink Tom Chair, um, I have to touch base, oh, with him about a few things, but long story short, are the, are the federal reimbursements and the CARES Act reimbursements which we have applied for and continue to apply for, uh, uh, you know, the turnaround, what we heard, um, at the beginning of the week, uh, like, it, uh, is out there taking longer than, uh, was initially conveyed to us. Uh, so, like, we are planning on an advisory board meeting, uh, for the 28th. How, however, I think at this point, the Lions, oh, yeah, the Lions Chair, uh, like, of the reimbursement funding, um, and what we hope, and what we hope the reimbursement funding will help us address. Oh, you know, like, things like the air duct, oh, you know, cleaning, uh, uh, you know, uh, like, a lot of, um, a lot, a lot of those appropriations and transfers, well, uh, actually happen at, um, at the December 2nd meeting um, of the advisory board at this point. Uh, so with that, Mr. Chairman, that was a lot, uh, but there's been a lot happening and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Director Mullen. Uh, Director, Commissioner Collins, do you have any questions or comments of the Director?
Uh, no questions. Nice job, Mike.
Uh, Commissioner Shea?
Uh, no, I'm all set at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, good job, Director Mullen, as usual, and, uh, uh, the, the Commissioners really appreciate you and the entire job that the staff does and, uh, we have one of the best staffs in, uh, in the state. Thank you very much. Uh, wait a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion, we try, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
There's a motion made and seconded that DeWitt, your, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, friend. Joe, I'll, um, I'll see you tonight at the Aggie trustee meeting.
Okay.